Start with the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those are pretty nice looking plegies.
Yeah.
Have you noticed that everything is clean in here?
Yes, it looks lovely.
Want to do a quick pledge on the last day?
It's very nice.
I would think of them if they were doing this.
Trusty Trombley?
Here.
Trusty McFetrich?
Here.
Trusty Trombley?
Here.
Trusty Garrett?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
Here. Motion to approve the minutes for the board meeting, May 13. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these, on this document? Let's see, yeah, it's, it's, it deals with putting the abstract towards the back, with the Mill Street issue. Last week, and I expect to hear back from them probably this weekend.
Which one are you talking about?
On the back here.
Is that a correction to the minutes?
No. No, I just, just making a comment.
Okay.
Any corrections, any additions, any deletions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same.
One exception. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the special board meeting, May 28.
Solid.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Mike, do you want to give the belts?
Yes.
Amy, I know you volunteered to take the belts.
We'll go to different places.
Oh, okay.
You have to go to Skinny Atlas.
Skinny Atlas, I will go to Utica.
Well, that's about forty miles away.
Forty miles north.
So we'll, we'll transfer, send it in like three.
I mean, it's a lot of money, forty miles.
No, it shouldn't be a lot of money.
They were trying to do it in Seattle, so.
Okay, let me know. I need to understand, do you have time for this side?
Any adjustments on these minutes?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I guess we could forego the public comment period. The report for Mr. Kettrow?
A busy month of grass, 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 and more grass. Yeah, I go around at least once a week while I'm here, make a list of who's cut it and who's not cut it. I've got it narrowed down to some of the perpetual violators, which we're going to use the court system with. Try that approach. Some of these are in the bank, they're repossessions, but we have new information on how to do with them. We're going to try that. And, you know, I send them one or two letters and see what happens. Some of them have cut it, but it seems like one person cuts theirs and there's a new one that springs up somewheres else. I know it's been raining a lot and the grass tends to grow, but when it grows afoot, somebody hasn't cut it in quite a while. So I've been dealing with that. The question of burning came up again, and I just wanted to reiterate for the board and camera that there is absolutely no burning in the village. Charcoal and charcoal pits are one thing, but burning wood smoke, that's entirely different. It's not allowed. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight is it's that time of year again where pools are springing up. You have to have a pool permit for any pool that's above twenty-four inches, regardless of what kind of pool it is. These blue blow-up pools for three, four hundred dollars. You have to have a permit for them, you have to have an electrical inspection, a pool alarm, and a fence around them. So people think that they're getting away cheap for four hundred dollars, but by the time they do all this other stuff, you may want to check the price on these things and how long they're going to last. Attended the water conference there, brought back some information for Woody and the wastewater plant and stuff. Other than that, it's just been a few permits and complaints here and there, about it.
Now, those people that are partially mowing their lawn, are they still getting a warning? You know, when they do the few strips across the front, so it pretends that they mowed?
Well, I've seen that, and then I'll wait a couple days and see if they finish the job or if they've reassessed it and gone out and got bigger goats or what. For the most part, once they seem to start, they seem to finish. It may not be within a day or two, but it seems like it's getting done. And I've got, I've got two of them watching right now that did some cutting, two, three strips this weekend, and then they quit. So I don't know if they hired their kids to do it or what.
Well, you have that chronic one right at the end of Butternut. They only, it's for sale by a realtor. What's the number of that? It's sixty...
So what's up with these?
Thirteen oh...
The end of Butternut?
No, oak. At the end of Butternut, I mean Chestnut, Chestnut, and...
Oak.
The tea. They only go a little bit in the front.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. They're on my list, yeah.
That's a continual, but that can, there were several partials. And O and O.
I've got a whole cage of them here.
Yeah.
Some of them, they're people that I've sent letters to multiple times. They're, you know, people buy property, they don't live here, they live elsewhere. They cut the grass and the whole beneath connected to wherever the hell they live. Why can't they cut the grass here? So I'm going to use the court and let them, I mean, they ain't going to like it, but after a while, they're going to get the message. It's never ending.
Well, I thought we were going to just mow and fill them.
Well, that's up to the board.
Isn't that what we had decided? You were sending out the original letter, which you did, said this is your one and only warning. If it goes above, we will be mowing. You'll be assessed one to two hundred dollars.
Yeah. I still send those letters out, and I have records of that. That's what I'm using for the court cases.
Right, so why don't we go ahead and mow in the meantime and still?
Well, that's up to you. Now, you have to know how long it takes before you reimburse.
I mean, that's what we had been told, right?
We're reliving them on the taxes where I'm going to get it back in the next year.
Well, that's up to the board if that's what you want to do.
It'll be in the...
Again, it's up to the board.
...year, but we won't get it till May.
I think we should try the court system first. I mean, generally, we've had pretty good response from, you know, when they go in and get fined, one hundred and fifty dollars, whatever it is.
Once I get the form made up on the computer, it's just a matter of changing the name. Takes time to do the information, the complaint, deposition, and all this stuff.
Well, and how about getting a court date? But then summer's over with again, and these poor people that live next to these cesspools, it's not fair.
I've got to give them at least thirty days because you never know what's going to happen with the judges. And then they have to get the letter, you've got to send it certified, then first class.
That's what I'm saying, just, just mow and attach them to the tax. I don't want to mess with it. It's a nightmare, in my opinion. I mean, it's a lot of work on your part. We sent out this initial letter, they're not doing it. It's not fair to the neighbors who are upkeeping their property and they're having to live next to this. Not only the varmints that are in it, but it's, it's a danger and it's not okay.
You also have to be aware that the ones that are in the county's foreclosing on, I don't think you get paid for those if you cut it.
The auctions?
Right.
There's, there's only one that's up here. And I think those, those folks that bought it put it in the office.
They mowed it. They mowed it this weekend.
Up here?
Yeah.
I didn't think it was mowed today.
Yeah. The workhouse?
Yeah.
Oh, ready for my ice? Yeah. The Chinese house, yeah. They mowed it this weekend.
All right, if we're all in agreement here, that's it. Mike, work with Mike and plan the contractor to get involved.
Do you have to put this out to bid or are you just going to, I'm just going to work here?
We'll just get quotes. You don't have to about the bid.
No?
No.
Okay. We'll get quotes and then mow.
What about the tenant that we're hiring? Did they do that?
He's overseas, I don't know.
Did he do that?
Well, he's, he's here. Apparently landscaping. I don't know that I want him mowing. I don't think that we should have him mowing.
Well, I think we discussed it this, this before, raking or putting that, I mean...
Repairing your liability insurance.
You don't know what's there. Who knows what's left on the lawn?
That's right.
It's a bad thing. It's stupid, I can't, unless you do it yourself.
Well, it's better if the contractors come in, they mow it, they rake it up, and they all do it.
Yes, I agree.
I think it's because they rush out. If it's chopping, it's not more.
Okay, we're all in agreement here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, the question's unique.
We'll, we'll list the product, we'll list the properties and put them out to bid. Try to get two or three bids.
Can you make a motion and a second?
Yes. You have a motion?
I make a motion that we put out to bid.
You're not really going out to bid though, you're just getting quotes.
Oh, getting quotes. Make a motion to get some quotes on mowing the properties that have been sent the violation letters and still have not mowed their property.
Second.
Second. You have a discussion on these, Mike?
I'd go ahead and choose the best and have them do it as soon as possible, not wait for the first notice.
There's three or four people here in town that do that, so we should be able to get it. Okay, pick a few long quotes.
Are you doing a roll call on that or just...
Yes, I have to roll calls expense funds.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Anything else from Mr. Kettrow?
Oh, I have, if you have something to me. Oh, I just have one update. On the grant funding for the last year's round of Northern Economic Development money, I spoke with Matt late this afternoon, Matt Cooper from Burning Your Car, and the eighteenth, they're supposed to have their, their awards decide whether or not they're going to release the names on the eighteenth that's left to be seen yet. So we have to take that, what, next week?
Tuesday.
So hopefully we're in, we get something.
Hopefully, so we can move on. I mean, with that new grant, I think we're, I don't know, if we don't get some money, I'm afraid that things are going to come along.
Well, the town board is supposedly going to authorize to spend the money for the next Northern Border Grant tomorrow night. So based on all the emails that I saw and that Poppy wrote and speaking with Larry.
Oh, it's a border, but it's...
Yeah, yeah, we have to have something come in pretty soon.
Something has to come in.
Other than that, that's probably the reason I have.
Thanks, Mike. Very pleased to report that the community garden is, is all prepared, ready for planning. This is a free service, and we ask that you share your extra produce with our local JCEO food shelf. I would like to extend a huge thank you to Kevin Triller for volunteering his time and equipment to till the community garden. This was an extremely helpful action in getting the garden ready after such a wet spring. Kevin, thank you. I'd also like to thank Joanne Ryan Favreau, who for every year plants her flowers that you see along the streets. I think she's done a wonderful job. They're very nice, they brighten up the streets a little bit. And again, thank you for a great job, Joanne. I'd like to reinforce what Mr. Kettrow has been saying about getting the lines mowed. He'll soon be issuing court appearance notices for properties that exceed the village codes pertaining to line maintenance. There are a number of properties that fit this category. Letters have been sent. Now, we'll take you to court, and you'll pay the big fine. If we, if we contract someone to mow the lawn, this will be relevied on your taxes, so that that will be taken care of as well. We have a number of important issues to discuss under the new and old businesses, and I will also be requesting an executive session to discuss personnel employment issues and performance issues after we deal with the number of those. There are a number of things that I would like you to work on, so that's all that I have. Just be dropped in.
I really do not have any report right now. We've got our new, Mike, we have our new summer personnel work.
It started last night.
Nothing like...
So far, so good.
Look, the village is cleaning up, looks nice.
Sorry, the weather wasn't, we've been out tripping all day today. By the time you got here, it's time to move. We don't want to do it.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McFetrich?
I have many official reports, but I'd like to also concur that the pile boxes are very beautiful. It's a nice addition to the village, and also thank Kevin Triller for the roads over the gardens room. I've been down there, and I, I know that it's been put in the paper at least twice. I don't know if a lot of people know about that, but I encourage everyone to go down and plant some things. It's a great location.
We had one person today who planted.
Oh, good, good, all right.
I've got two, somebody else has one?
I have one.
You have one?
Yeah. I've had some people asking about when the playground work is going to start, and maybe they have a little bit planned in now.
Some speaking, some talking.
So they had time, okay. And I also just want to say that I, the website of the village is really nice. I was looking over that. And for those of you who use Facebook, the Facebook Village of Champlain is also really nice. People should check that out, and they should like it. That's all I have to say.
I'd like to congratulate Trusty McFetrich on her impending retirement from Northeastern Clinton Central School after many, many years of service. Thank you, job over. Mr. Trump?
I have nothing to report, Mike.
Mr. Garrett?
Okay, as far as the playground, I do apologize. I did start a new job April 1st, and I'll be certified this week, so I'll be able to schedule more freely with my time. I can adjust my schedule, so I'm going to meet with Mike on layout, take a look at the equipment from both places, kind of get an idea of what we want to do. We did receive another grant, the Charles R. Wood Grant, a $2,500 grant, which we're thrilled to be getting, and thank you for that. We will use that wisely. And I did, was going to say thank you to Kevin and Joanne, she all beat me to it. I hate going last and never get to have anything to say.
Next month, you go first.
But Joanne, just something to know about this, these flower pots. You know, when I do a flower arrangement, I just go in the nursery and I just say, oh, I like this, I like this, I like this. I go home and I just shove it into a pot. She spends all this time designing a layout, talks with the people to figure out the height and how far it's going to go, and this and that, and plans, and, oh my, way too much time. But, you know, just so you really appreciate the work that she does, she thinks about it, lays it out, and this is all volunteer in her crazy, busy schedule, so, you know, thank you there. And to Kevin as, as well, you know, that's time and use of his equipment to come down and do that for us, so that's really quite nice. So still applying for grants as I see them, and we'll let you know as we get them. But we will be starting the process as soon as we can. And if there's anyone listening to this who's interested in helping us, call and get your name on the list so that when we set some dates, rain dates or whatever, to start moving equipment, we've got the names and we can contact you right away and not wait to make an announcement and everything.
I have one.
Okay. So I know there's lots of people out there that want to help with it and make it a big community day and maybe do a pass-a-dish and, you know, a little picnic while we're working type deal would be really nice to do. So I'd like to get moving on that so we can, you know, get this playground, the initial parts of it, maybe not the new pieces as we wait for more money to come in, but, you know, get the initial old equipment moved into place so that when we begin the summer with the kids having a place to go to, it would be really nice. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I have the report from Mr. Trump, please.
For one, I have the expense revenue reports for May, which is the end of our year. And I think we're going to leave it.
Good, good. We also have the new hoop. Did everybody get a copy of the hoop? Have checks on me?
Yeah, the drive-through, yeah.
Any questions for one of you? Any requisition?
No. Yes, we do. One requisition for granger, for glassware, wipes, which Woody uses at the sewer and the wastewater plant.
Any other? Put this together.
That's together, true. But we just divided it between the two.
Okay. Any motion to approve this requisition?
Solid.
You have a second?
Second.
Let's explain these, or use the wastewater.
Very much, I don't actually have to prove it. Quite a bit of money, but it's double of what we, you know, usually get. You're getting twice as many for less than forty bucks less than what you're paying them for half of it.
Can we roll call questions?
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
All right. Any additional work, Kevin?
We have some additional bills. For a total, the additional bills for a total of $4,099.73.
Any questions, Kevin, on the work?
You should be able to move the additional.
You have a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss any issues here.
Well, so Clinton County Treasurer, one, our tax seller. We're doing these are new supplier.
I know it's pretty expensive on the high guys, but we're getting to work. It's just amazing, the number of them or not. Any other comments on that part? Roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Your report from the superintendent, please?
Well, we've been busy. So there's a few DI's we repaired, one by the Legion, one by Mill Street, or a single, single rather, by Mill Street. We started taking care of a few sidewalks just before the, we had a bazaar here. One on Church Street and one over in front of the laundry room. Where we had the water main break, we got that taken care of. There's still quite a few to do, but it's going to be a little while here before we get to them. We had our annual inspection with Judy Ross. I haven't got the floor for it, I don't think this came back yet from the Department of Health Department. Water reports are handed out every year. Street names changed on Church Street, that was the community garden is, that was Church Street, Water Street, Main Lane. That's now, as of, I think, June 1st, they changed the sign door. It's now Main Lane all the way around, just so everybody's aware. Right now, we're, we're staying pretty busy. We're getting thinly dry and filling up, ready for paving. Because the Culverton, that road's going to be widened about five or six feet. So right now, we're digging it out, putting gravel, they're going to put gravel base on both sides. That's what we're working on right now. And we have a pump failure at the list, at the Main Street List Station. A little while back, we had a pump failure. We put a pump in that we had, the extra pump, but it was a pump they had pulled out from somewhere that had never been looked at. They had put it in, and it trips and breaks, and there's something wrong with the pump. So I brought them, actually, I had, we dropped off, we just brought samples to Karen Electric, and they're going to look at them, give us an estimate of what it's going to cost to fix them. Well, it's two pumps, we had two extra pumps, we sent them both down. One of them, I know the cord had been cut. But I'll, we've been bench testing to make sure before...
Just cut the cord?
Well, I think there's one time it got sucked into it. It was hanging to, although this is from quite a long time ago, they had a replacement stick. We fixed the cord, but as long as we're sending them on, have them look at both of them. And then we'll go, when we pull this one out, we're going to swap it, and we'll get a new one back in. The only other issue I, well, we did, also did a, it was a sewer line break on Cedar Street that they were going to fix, actually, we fixed it last Friday. And the water line was fairly cold, so eventually they hit it. So we went over, shut the water off, which the curb stop worked. Unfortunately, the curb stop is broken and the ground does not, can't shut the water off without. So while, before they done the sewer line, it started out by the street, and we got to the main water line, we cut it live, and we put a new valve, and everything is new now, so now it can be, can be shut off. That's taken care of. The only other thing I have is truck, or natural, or blow.
We'll use your expertise on your new business.
Okay. No, I have, I have any question?
Did you find somebody for the roof?
Not sure.
What are you dealing with on your business, though?
So we can do it now. We're doing that, we can do that.
They only have the one.
Yeah, and I was talking to one this afternoon, and it never came.
Was that?
Lake Champlain. They said, she said they'd have it moved by Monday. And I tried to call them, or after I got back here and called, it was like, it didn't end up before. I got answers, she had to go to Florida.
It just amazes me that there's no local contractor here that want to do this job.
Are they too busy?
I don't know if they're too busy, but it's just they won't even return full cuts.
I saw them like three times, four times, and mowed them, yeah.
Well, we, we have one quote and...
Yeah, quote, it was redone, we were stripping the tin.
Okay.
And send a new one.
That's the one for $22,310?
Yes. Yeah, this, this one here says, remove the existing tin and use that in the future, that's on the quote. That's for the whole room. Yes. The second part, the number at the top is redone because of removal of the, I don't want to make sure that it was on the first one, so Henry sent it.
Well, we've been asking for quotes for over a month now.
Oh, yeah. At least.
And this gentleman is all insured and has all the...
Says yes, but no one, I mean, we decided, I'll be able to work before he is. Super not, or I'm sure he is, but we need paper, you know. That was the trouble with so many of the others we had, they were going to do it. Some of the guys who weren't coming didn't have insurance, so...
Are we playing a lottery?
Yeah.
While we're discussing?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept this quote of $22,310, Supernov Construction LLC, for the repair of the roof.
Second motion, discussion?
The other, I think we're kind of forced, so we need to act on it.
Exactly.
We can't keep doing this for...
It'll be three or four months.
It's unfortunate that we can't find a contractor who want to do it, so I don't understand it, but... In my opinion, there's anything to hire this guy, you can do that.
How, how lo, how far out is he, anyway?
I'll know when I call him tomorrow, I'll find out. He was about two weeks originally, but that was, you know, three weeks ago.
Well, and given the weather that we've had this summer, I mean, so far.
The rain we've had, it's backed them up a little bit, but...
Yeah, it's pretty important, you would just get on.
And I just want to point out that if you have this quote, if there's lading, boarding, or anything like that, it's going to be additional costs.
Right.
Out of material.
Yeah.
For kind of materials, so it's going to be a bit more. But you're going to, you're going to have that regardless.
Yes, you're going to, and you have no idea what you're going to get once you start pulling stuff off from there. I mean, any construction projects surprise.
It could be a little scary, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess I have two, two issues. One is replacing the rotten boards. What happens if there's a significant area that's rotten here? You may end up having to sheet this roof, that thing, or apply whatever. It's going to be quite expensive to do that.
But if you look at the expense of doing that versus letting the building fall in around itself, you don't really, you don't really have a choice.
It really needs attention.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I know, but we may have additional costs to do that.
Yeah.
Quite certainly, I think.
You have some idea how much that might be? Over ten thousand dollars? You might want to think about going out to bid then, and, because if it's more than thirty-five thousand...
If you push it forward, maybe.
Yeah, if it's more than thirty-five thousand, you're supposed to go up the bid.
Okay, so with, with that being said then, do we now have to start this process all over again? Because you have no idea what you're going to get for price once he, you can't let the guy get up there and get this project half underway? And then go, oops, now you're over thirty-five thousand, we got to go up the bid.
I can't imagine it.
This is going to cost more.
Cheating it, it's going to be more than, over thirteen thousand dollars.
Well, if you get up there based on the damage, it's just going to be a lot of replacement of the wood. I mean, that's in it, forty dollars an hour plus material, that's going to happen quite quickly. Well, at, at least you would be following the proper procedure.
Yep.
If you go up to bid. And you don't have, you can advertise it, set a date when you're...
Well, we don't have to take?
No, no, but I mean, as far as the timeline, you can have it, you know, in the paper, and then in two weeks, have the bidding thing, and...
Well, if we, if we do that, if we do that, maybe we'll get a bigger point of chance, then, maybe one too, just from... There's only that thing, we just gave you shingles, the back part, they would just get it seen, they don't do ribbed tin, uses standing seams, more, same with the gates.
That would have to be for a big...
What are we putting down here?
Ribbed, ribbed tin. They have, so they have like the old style standing seam.
Uh huh.
That's what nature is putting, it's, so what they do, they look, move it everywhere. It's more commercial style.
It's, it's good wood.
It's heavy.
We're not impressed with it.
Yeah.
The other thing I noticed, or Mike doesn't understand for Supernov, is the, there's nothing there about removing the terming boards.
Well, he did tell me that on the first one, I verbally wrote it. He did, I can have him add it on there, but he said that wasn't included in that.
Yeah, that might be a good idea, Mike, just to...
I'll put it.
Or is this going to come out?
Just to...
I never thought I mentioned it, I told him it would be a good for me.
Just covers them, covers us.
Just a suggestion, the contractor that's doing the roof, where Dr. Wu lived, that's a standing seam roof that they're putting on there. And they're out of Vermont, I saw that today going by, so you may ask them for a quote, you have a standing seam right there.
You don't mean, that's who they are?
Yeah, that was...
No, but their equipment is still there, they're not done. I saw that when you mentioned the standing seam.
I know that, because I did that, and asked them, and they said, so when we do those two companies, they'll...
So what do you think, Ray, should we go out to bid?
I think we, I think we can put it up to bid.
Okay.
If this person here wants to, wants to stay in the process, they can bid.
Yeah.
So...
I think everyone, what I'm gathering here is everybody would feel a little more comfortable with a couple other bids. Especially like if, you know, the overall expense of what's going to happen here, if you don't want to go and find a bid.
How soon could we get that, you think?
Probably after now. You just have to help me with what you want to say.
Another suggestion might be, if some contractors would want to do the shingle part, but not the metal part. You may break it up into two separate jobs.
That's, that's how this one was actually broken, here, you put it all in one, but it's two separate. And that's how I tried to do it.
If you're going to put standing seam on the back, that's a specialty, and you're not going to get a lot of contractors bidding on that.
Well, we had that with, one, just wanted to do this, didn't want to do that.
Would we financially better do the shingle up?
You can't shingle the back roof, it's not on pitch. Actually, I, I always guessed that that's probably questionable of putting just regular metal on there. Because if you have snow that builds up and it melts, it travels back through the ribs. That's why those companies will only do standing seam. Yeah.
Well, maybe they have to do half, half lock.
Half lock, that's good for ten years. We've got to have a good sub base for that, there you would be cheating for sure.
So what's the board's pleasure?
Because it sounds like it's a lot to bid.
Do you need that motion? He said that motion was a good one.
Um, I'll amend my motion to, in light of the damage that we don't know that might be underneath there when the contractor gets in there. That we amend the motion to go out to bid for the replacement, repair and replacement of the roof.
One second.
Call the board, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any negative motion carries? Anything else, Mike? Well, let's, let's, we've done the roof, let's, let's continue with the new business and talk about the front.
Today we've been out to, we, we had a small weather leak in the old international account. A while ago, we had looked at a Peterbilt. And you're going to leak where it is, you're looking at seven, eight thousand dollars, and it's a small job, you know, you're going to spend a truck. So we've been using it, we use it for our water main break up here. We were, we've got some gravel through the town, Alan, it's nice stuff to give us some gravel. So we were hauling it, and we're digging the roadside out. And today it started also to make the integration.
What, what truck are you talking about?
The old international dump truck. The old pile truck.
Okay.
So...
Where's it leaking the interpreets from?
Somewhere across, but it's going all the way around. It's about worth it, so...
How old is the truck?
It's ninety.
It's a ninety or ninety-nine?
Well, you may be right.
I think it's either ninety-nine or...
It might be a ninety-nine, actually. We have the Peterbilt pile truck. The only disadvantage with that one, if you use a backload load, its sides are so high, when you lift up, the stuff falls out. Yeah, it's got a shorter box on it, little truck. That's the only bad thing with the regular pile sander truck, you can't, you can't really use a backload load it. Because by the time you get to boom up, everything's rolling out of the bucket. But in, um, I mean, Doc Allen, right, he runs a baller truck, he knew that, and we sent the last we had, so... I want to kind of use that right now, so we're getting our roads ready for paving. Originally, it was supposed to be end of July, and I did go down with John Corrie, and he stopped in a couple weeks for paving for now.
About two weeks from now?
Well, he told me last week, two weeks, but I'm sure the weather slowed things down, he's been with the village, he's been with the town, you know, I'm sure where he's slowed down a little bit, maybe an extra week, but trying to get our roads...
Is he doing all this for the birds, or...
I wouldn't imagine, once he had all these in this area, you know, so a little bit of favor here and there. So, but we're kind of in a crunch to get these roads ready. I don't know, as far as fixing it, I don't know if it's really, it's not worth bringing up this money to fix. I don't know if we can find something used, maybe they'll use single axel dump truck. You know, we use it just around the village, it's not like we're hauling, holding it over there.
Do we, do we need the spare plow, so?
We don't need the spare plow, I mean, we can get by, we'll, we'll give them what they have, we'll do them.
So how often do we really need this, so can't we just share a vehicle?
Anytime that you're using a backload dig. And you can use the small one tonne new dump truck, but it's going to hold. And if you've got anything that's a good size, you're going to use that truck.
So it, when we do that, could we not just borrow, you know, this is a perfect case for shared service and, you know...
Well, in this situation, we let them borrow one, and whether, you know, I don't know if we can rely on...
But that will continue or not.
Right. I mean, the truck I borrowed is an old truck like what we had. I don't know how long they're going to keep it, or if they're going to keep it, uh, when he was less than, well, he used it. Many of it, all ten more gravel dumpers. I asked him, he said that he could use that truck, and it's only two different miles, which is, it was very nice things that were, were on that. But I think we should look at, even if it's an early used truck, something, uh, for that case scenario, I think that if we have a water main break, we got to dig. Can't roll anything, you can do it over, it's not, it didn't go high enough, the size of your car.
You might have to, you might have to do one type of thing. Material, build dirt, wet dirt, if you need to do a bit, bring you back sand to fill it, hold.
We're getting by, but it's not really, if you're going to destroy that, you break the spring to destroy that new truck, it's not...
It's not meant for that.
No. I mean, if those are made to, you know, put a little bit of sand or this kind of thing, or put a sander in, in a small sander box, or, but to load it up like what we need to? We need to take your trip after trip to get, you know?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not made for that.
What's on the boat, a couple?
Could we buy it used, or?
What's that?
We buy that?
Small truck?
Yeah.
Yeah. Brand new one, myself.
Smaller, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the one that we're talking about, the purchase from else's twenty years ago. That and the sand, I believe. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, before we got the Peterbilt, we spent a significant amount of money repairing the shocks and the rear end of the truck. To the tune of, if I remember correctly, seven to eight thousand dollars. And now, we've had a, an oil leak in the back for a while, and it takes the quote there with four or five thousand, it's that.
They have to have more job, basically.
That might be money that are spent on looking into either a very good used one or something like that.
I would feel more comfortable if we had a vehicle that was here in our parking lot.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, for water main break, or, or not have to go over the town.
Well, and the thing about it is with the town, if it's, if the town has some emergency, then they need to be using all their vehicles.
Sometimes, sometimes that do, if it's a single axle, it's a little harder.
That's an old truck, too.
That's an old, like this one. I mean, they're out, they have cannons, of course, everything's bigger, the roads are bigger, they're, I mean, I'm sure they're going to have one coming up here for sale, not too long, but it's cannon. And some of the streets, not made for, you know, weeds, it's small.
So I guess, always better to have a roof.
Yeah, so it sounds like we need one.
I did, talked to, I got to get the, what they're waiting to get out of this, of the truck that we have, and Rick at Peterbilt is going to look. Let us know what he can come across as far as used, you know, single axle dump trucks that we're looking for. At least in this price, we have an idea on what, what they go for. And we don't want it to be new by any means, and not be a brand new truck, but something that's at least role worthy that...
Will have for a couple of years anyway.
And the other thing now, even if, that wasn't even the only thing we needed, because of the inspection right now.
I mean, something that's...
The inspection is going to only affect it.
And you want, let's...
So now, we're between that. Yeah. Things are driving, yeah.
So is the board okay with Michael looking for something used?
Yes, absolutely.
At least, yeah. At least, you know, get idea of what's out there, and how much, and...
What he said.
Get to start somewhere.
Is there, is there, I know when we buy new pickup trucks, and probably with that other truck that we bought, is there a state contract for used?
No, I don't know.
No?
Probably just new.
Okay.
Surplus, you know, sometimes the state is also off.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
They just had that option, Vermont and New York in the past weekend.
Yeah.
And which are, you're buying everybody else's headaches, actually.
Well, this is true, you don't, if you're kind of getting...
This is where you send this truck.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the truck is, is probably scrap for a time.
We don't need my, yes, we need so much money, what are you doing with that?
I wouldn't be good about selling it for something.
I mean, it served, what we need here to serve our purpose, bond, and now, so it's, we can't, can't use that anymore, I think, it's, you know. Better can, you can...
You have to learn the same, so it's not to be...
Yeah. It just started out really well, but I...
So Mike will look for a replacement?
I'm going to see what we can buy for prices and...
Come back for the next four years?
Yeah, see what we can buy, and we'll look for there.
Are we all okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Looking him, okay.
Well, I think we're, I think he's going to have to do...
Stroking out the amount of money so far tonight.
It's not going to, doesn't do our equipment any good if we don't spend the money to take care of it, keep it up and replace it.
Things have seemed to have been neglected for such a long time, you know? You know, we can do, we can do, now what's...
Yeah, sometimes you can reach a point where making it new just doesn't work anymore, you can't afford money to get anything.
Hey, anything else for Mike? Hey, to the correspondence, please?
Letter and proclamation to American Legion Cause nine twelve auxiliary regarding the annual poppy field. Violation letters to various property owners regarding failure to cut the grass. Correspondence from the Charles Howard Wood Foundation awarding the village twenty-five hundred dollar grant of playground with a thank you letter to the village. Correspondence from Governor Andrew Cuomo congratulating Mayor Martin on his reelection. Letter of violation to Elizabeth Miller regarding brass cutting. Letters of violation to various property owners regarding failure to cut grass. Correspondence from the Clinton County Youth Bureau regarding state aid funding. Monthly report from JCEO. Correspondence from Governor Andrew Cuomo congratulating trustee Janet McFetrich on being elected. And a letter from Mayor Martin regarding spelling our name. Thank you letter to Joanne Baur for planting the village flowers. Thank you letter to Kevin Trilla for telling the community garden.
See, I guess, just, any comments on the correspondence? Just so you know, what was the Youth Bureau state aid funding? I think it was four hundred dollars, four hundred and something.
No, it's not, no, a hundred and something, three something.
Sorry, I'm sure we're due.
Three oh four. Uh, no, it's a census, one thirty-two. Village. For the village. Village only gets a hundred and thirty-two dollars. Is what we get for our recreation program.
A hundred and two dollars?
Yes, that's it.
And what's, what's the hundred and eighteen for?
What's the youth funds or pension fund?
Eligible, eligibility, release funds to the village, to the town.
And we have how many bids?
The town, it looks lower than seven one.
Three hundred and four.
We, we have three?
Three hundred and four, three hundred and four kids.
Popularity should have used the services last year.
Nip. Used to be over two hundred, it keeps going now.
Hey, anything else on the correspondence? You've been copied with the Clinton County Health Department, replacing the water meter at the, at the plant, that has been approved. When Mike can put it into his head a day. And we'll also bring up a technician from...
He'll be fresh out.
Yeah. To oversee, and I understand at no cost.
Yeah, well, they're going to get me, maybe, maybe a way, if I need to look at that.
Yeah, so it's, all we have to do is go to fight the health department, and we're going to change that meter, and they've been very good about helping us out there. Any motion to accept the resignation of Terrence Lindgren, effective June sixth, two thousand thirteen? Got a second? Any, any discussion on this?
Um, I would just like to say that I, I wish Terry and his wife, Debbie, the best of luck with their, their new endeavors.
Yes. I'd like the board's opinion on some surveying costs, for having some property surveyed here in the village. I've had, talked to a citizen, I've talked to a resident, who has some interest on Moore Street, of purchasing some river frontage. Down by the river, which would have to be surveyed before we could put that on the market. I think it would be good, it's just, it's not being used now. Get it on the tax rolls, and it may open up some of that area. I mean, he's already got plans, he'd like to put a stairway down there, and if there's a flat spot, he'd have to put a table on it. The other thing I'd like to see surveyed is River Street, the buyout properties. I'd like to have... I'd like to have that situation settled, uh, so that we know where the states are, and we know where the village's property lines are. In talking to the, uh, county administrator, there was no survey done when this property was bought out, and, uh, there are some issues now as to where the village's property line is. And I'd like to, I'd like to, uh, solve that issue as well. Uh, I have not talked to a surveyor, I'm assuming it's, you know, it's gonna be significant. Uh, I'd like the board's feeling about, uh, I'd like to have the broad bond survey put on the market, it's not doing us any good. Uh, we can sell it, put it back on the tax rolls, uh.
Are there any other mysterious property around that we should get surveyed and get it on for sale while we're doing it?
Well, we may have to do, we may have to go back and look at Mill Street once the outstrials, so.
Right.
We can do that now, if you, if the board desires, but, uh, I, I would at least.
We'll get a ballpark what it would cost us, and we can do the surveys.
Yeah, probably, we're probably talking a thousand dollars a piece.
You know, it would be cheaper by having them do all of it once, instead of coming back up.
Give me.
So, you know, ask that question. And we generate monies to cover some of these expenses, that's a good thing.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think the property, the, the river frontage would take care of the cost of all of this. And then, River Street is a, is a federal buyout, but again, I think it's important that you know the property lines, it seems to be some question, that's a good point. And the broad bond is just set up here, is that.
Okay, what's the hard part? Is it on the, on the first one, or?
On the first one, the one that.
But that's those part.
That's those part.
You didn't know, you don't find it?
Sure, we're scared of water.
Yeah, oh, right.
You notice there's a, a, there's a difference now.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's gonna be a, wasn't it a turbine in there that generated electricity? I'm afraid it's a live roof, also, it's open, the whole is, uh, turbines were, everything's like, weird. I've already been given the understanding of this.
Historic, or, yeah, they aren't good.
Lot, they look a lot, so.
Would you like a motion, Greg?
Uh, yes, please.
I make a motion, um, that we get someone in to do, do facials on these pieces of property, find out where, um, lines are, and, and be more clear cut.
Got a second? Can we, uh, do we need to add a financial number here?
Do we have any idea how much it would cost, and I thought that was expensive?
Well, I think it is on the expensive side.
Ten thousand?
No.
That's the, he's flashing ten grand this way.
But, but.
Okay, that's, uh, well, let me call, let me call the local surveyors and see what it comes, if everything comes back next month, then I have a better idea, if they're it.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's fine, but I, I guess the bottom line, the way I look at it is if we're going to do it, is it gonna matter if it comes back at ten thousand, or five thousand, or fifteen thousand, if we're gonna do it?
No, I don't think so, I think it should be done.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's just something you're gonna drag on for another month, and, that's just my opinion.
If you wanna get three quotes and roll the lowest quote.
We could do that, Greg.
Very interesting.
Sold!
Three quotes? Got that on.
I, I base that number based on when the town has subdivisions that come through the planning board, and just to survey a normal building lot, for, you know, an acre lot is anywhere from a thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars for a small lot, and you get, it, it all depends on the research, and how much, actually, research work that you do, surveying part is easier, there's discrepancies, and it's.
Okay, I'll call, uh, three surveyors, get a, get a quote, and we'll look at the lowest bid. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, you'll notice in the paper, we've been advertising for, uh, can you help one pages?
Yes.
Excuse me, you had a motion, Kim and Janet, for, to do, get someone to do the survey and bring it, and.
Are we gonna do a final vote?
Get three bids, get the lowest bid, three quotes, get the lowest bid.
But we need to vote on it.
Do you have to amend that?
There's a first, there's a second, she did.
The board doesn't vote.
Right, then we get to amend it.
I amend my motion that Greg will call and get three different quotes, we will vote the lowest quote for the property.
And I can run that.
And you can word it, yes.
And you can what?
Award it.
I can award it, I can call.
So we can get it going instead of waiting for another one?
It must be clear, what can, we're telling you, you can do what?
Well, just so we don't have to wait on the next board meeting.
Yes, okay.
And I will second that.
Hey, any more discussion? Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich, aye. Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin, aye. All right, you'll notice we've, uh, we've got a help wanted ad in the paper, last week, three days, uh, we've got an update for applications, it's the fourteen. I put in the paper that we will start interviewing on the nineteenth, right now, we've got a significant number of folks that have come in and, uh, asked for applications, I think for probably ten, maybe twelve.
Almost nine, that we have here, we handed out at least twenty, or not twenty-four applications.
Okay, so, you know, what we're getting, uh, you know, one of the stipulations was a high school to enroll our GED, uh, that's important, I think, because if we wanna send this person to school for water, wastewater, whatever, the only way that they can go to these schools is if they have a high school diploma. So that was one of the requirements, uh, a driver's license, we can send them after we decide which person that we want to employ, we can send them down to motor vehicle and test for a CBL license act, but as long as they have a, a current driver's license without any, without any, uh, infractions on it, I mean, they assume that we're not gonna, they assume that we're not gonna hire somebody with EWDI. But we can, we can send them down. What I would like to do, because of the large number, and because I'd like to involve as many of board members as I possibly could, uh, Mike and I will go through the applications and get the ones that need our requirements, and then, uh, we can call them later this week. I'd like to start interviewing at least some of them on Monday. So, we, we, we can, over a couple of days, Monday and Tuesday, uh, we can keep the, we, uh, these applications will already be closed, accepting them, so I think the sooner we begin this process, the better.
Well, do you want, Mike, do a preliminary interview? I mean, when you've got this many candidates, you're really gonna wanna read.
Read them out.
Read first, you know, you'll get a gist in the first fifteen minutes, you, I wanna go further, it's carrying that, and then, you know, make your piles, eliminate, and then.
There are some, I was up in Florida today, there are some that just, we don't qualify. They just, they don't, you know, I think we were talking about this this afternoon, people don't think that this, they don't understand that this is all part of this job that we're dealing with. There are some that have, uh, that have equipment experience, and I think that's something that we need to look for, specifically, can you drive a tractor, can you use a backhoe, or, uh, you know, another aspect of this truck that I probably should have thrown in there, but didn't, is, I mean, this is June, we're not so far away from plowing season.
Yeah, well, absolutely not.
And this new person is going to have to be trained in that, in that truck, or I'm gonna have to go to the union and ask for, uh, ask for an exemption, and perhaps put our super dividend in.
We'll do what we need to do until we have somebody that's.
Well, Woody is plowable too, isn't he not, is he not?
Uh, he, he can, he can, but prefers not, but he can't.
Okay, well, he, he, right, yes.
At that point.
Yes.
Okay, uh, plus he's, uh, you know, he's, we've had kind of an informal agreement here over the years for the people in the back, for the plowing, and Woody can get the overtime.
Well, right, I realize that, but I'm saying, in an emergency situation, we do have that to fall back on.
Yeah, so those, I don't wanna put you at the spot there, Mike, I'll let you go there, just don't borrow that down everyone's, around the village. So I'd like to, uh, Mike and I can go through them, uh, for links and calls, and then, I'd like to, actually, I really would like to start Monday, Tuesday, and talk to some of these folks. So I'll keep them informed, email or whatever. I mean, it's so important now, he's got so much work to do, uh, and it's gonna take a period of time to train this individual, which is really the issue, I think. Okay, surveying, that's, thanks. Uh, may I ask, will we stand on the first count policy?
I.
That's my fault.
I've gone through and made the changes, I was just speaking with Amy about it tonight. It sounds like we're kind of on the same page, she, um, was gonna bring hers with her tonight, and, um, forgot it at home, but, um, I, I would like to have this buttoned up by the next board meeting, for sure.
Give her a key.
Okay, so the next board meeting, we'll, we'll hash that out. Okay?
What I'd like to do on that, Greg, is if Amy and I can, um, basically go through our papers and give them to Donna or Juanita, and say, here's the changes we just present at the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Is that feasible?
Sure.
Okay, and if everyone's in agreement, we can vote on it that night.
Sure.
Mike, do you have any blatant that you, uh, changing?
Hey, any other new business, whole business, anything else we need to discuss here? Any motion to go out of the regular meeting?
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to go into executive session? Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, we're in executive session.
All right, I'll put it right there.
Put it down, or what?
Push that.
Yeah, it's on, it's on.
Okay, we're back in regular session. Uh, we have some new business to discuss.
Uh, okay, so regarding, um, the keeping of animals and livestock of different natures within the village, um, Mike has given us, given Janet and I several different wordings that have come from, from some of the surrounding communities, and we're going to go with one that is, um, very simple, very straightforward, fowl, hogs, cows, horses, goats, or other farm animals shall not be permitted within the village limits. Very plain, simple, directed to the point, so we would like to have this go to Mr. Marshall to have our local law amended.
Okay, good, perform a motion.
I make a motion that we, um, give this new wording to Mr. Marshall to have our local law on, um, animals within the village amended.
Second.
A second.
Any special amendments?
I'm plumbed, I wanted to get chickens.
Mike, will this work for us?
Yeah, I believe so, yes, it's, it's to the point, and he clearly identifies what's allowed, what's not allowed, and I don't believe in vague, unless Mr. Marshall has other wording, you know, he wants to inject it, but I, I think it's sufficient.
I've got a request for a roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Mr. Nannan, any business come before the board?
No, we're adjourned.
Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.